Okay, for those of you that just got on, thank you for your patience. We may end up maxing out on the amount of participants on Zoom. So we'll record it and those people that weren't able to view it tonight can watch it. We'll post it on our website and then I can follow up if anyone has questions. Again, I've muted everybody and if you unmute, everyone's going to hear your voice and your background and everything. So if you could keep it muted and then if in the chat function, you can type your questions for me. Both that way, if I can answer all of them, I'll do my best. Otherwise, what I'll do is I'll go back and make sure if questions weren't answered, I'll follow up with you guys to make sure that those were answered. And if at the end of all of this, you still feel like your questions weren't answered, please reach out to me and I will call you personally to have a conversation. I just want to make sure that everyone feels a little bit better after tonight as far as what is the plan for the school? How are we going to handle these situations that come up? And so I appreciate everyone just sticking with this technological little struggle here. But we're going to go ahead and get started. And Father, do you want to lead us in a prayer or I can lead us in a prayer? Doesn't matter. If you'd like to, otherwise I'll begin in prayer. Father might have snuck away. Okay, it's like I'm leading us in prayer, which is awesome. So we'll just go ahead and begin with prayer. Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, thank you so much for bringing all of these people here tonight. Thank you for helping us to focus our eyes on you despite what might be going on behind us and in the background and in front of us. Help us to trust in you and stay prayerful. And help us to work with each other in a kind, Christian, Catholic way. And please protect all of these students, all of the staff, and all of the families this year as we go through this school year during this time of uncertainty. Help protect us every single day when we come into this building and when we're in our homes and when we're out. Please show us the way, show us your light, and look out for us. And help us to remain faithful to you and not lose hope. As we pray, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Well, welcome everyone. Thank you all for joining. I really do appreciate you guys taking time. I know we're already cut into about 20 minutes. So I'm going to just give a general overview of this plan. Most of you probably had access to this plan. And those of you that haven't seen the plan yet, you can access it on our website. It is posted. So please feel free to access that during this time. I'm going to just go through the general plan. I won't be able to get into every single detail, but basically I want you guys to feel like there's a little bit more certainty after we go through this. Again, I'll be asking you to post questions in the chat function and I'll do my best to try and answer as many questions as I can. And if I wasn't able to answer your question, I'll follow up and make sure that I reach out to you so that your question's answered. And I'll do that by tomorrow. So I don't want you to have to sit on that. So again, thank you all for joining me. So as you know, Cooter School District made announcement last week and we are still going to be open on Monday, starting on Monday, the 17th. It is a half day. So school will be starting at 7:45 every single morning. And we'll go through what does drop off look like, what does pickup look like? And I'll be posting some pictures online for you guys on our website for where you specifically need to drop your students off and how that with directions on how that needs to take place. So please bear with us. There's a lot of information. Again, I'll do my best to answer all your questions and then follow up with you if your questions weren't answered. So there's kind of four different levels of school operations. Level one would be a normal operation, so kind of like how all schools were last year. Everyone's on campus. There's mixed groupings, meaning that maybe kindergarten and preschool are getting together. Maybe fourth and fifth are getting together. All the middle school kids, the different math classes are mixing with different grades. Parents, you were able to come into the building, have lunch with your kid, hang out in the lobby and have conversation. Off-campus travel such as field trips, things like that. All that stuff was able to take place. Sports. Unfortunately, this year, in order for us to be open in compliance with Larimer County Health, the Archdiocese, and some of the state requirements, we're kind of in this level too. So it allows us to still have in-person learning with certain protocols in place. There is an option for distance learning. We will be asking you as parents to do a home screening, a checklist, every morning, and I'll get into that. There will be temperatures taken upon arrival. Masks will be worn, and I'll get into that. Social distancing as much as possible. I know that there's going to be a difference between preschoolers versus eighth graders. And so we're going to do our best to keep as much distance as possible. Hand hygiene. We won't just assume that everyone's taught their kid a nifty little song for washing their hands and we'll be teaching that over and over again every single day and reminding kids. Once they get in a good habit, there will be lots of signage posted for that as well. Frequent cleaning, there will be clean taking place not only after school, but also during the day. And I'll get into that as well. Cohorts, so keeping those grades together, that is really key in order for us to stay open and limiting how many classes end up possibly getting sick. By keeping, let's say, first grade all together. If first grade, let's say, has a case of COVID, then only first grade would have to be quarantined for 14 days and the rest of the school would potentially would not have to go into that quarantine period. So that's kind of key. Also, we'll be having, you know, obviously you can bring cold lunch, but we also will be having hot lunches made by Sylvie in the cafeteria delivered to those classrooms. The kids will be either within the class or outside, preferably outside as much as possible. Obviously during the cooler months, we may. If you guys can make sure your microphone is muted, I'd appreciate it. Okay. Level three would be sort of a partially, students are in the building. So kind of what PSD was going to do where it was hybrid. You had maybe a half the students in the school and the other half were at home and then they would be switching back and forth. And then level four would be the campus is completely closed and it's only remote learning. And we'll get into when would that take place? Okay, so parents, when are you going to be coming into the building? It's very, very limited, especially to start off with. We would ask that, I would prefer that you even just call the school office, call Denise or Karen or Deirdre and just let them know what's going on. And then what's going to happen is if you're needing to pick up your student, we would ask that you call ahead of time, letting us know, you know, obviously Johnny needs to be picked up at 10 o'clock today. And then when you arrive into the. We would just ask that you would call the front office and we will have your student brought out to you. This is limiting how many people are coming into the building. Okay, now that would be for a regular doctor's appointment or something else that's going on. For a COVID type of case, that'll be handled a little bit differently. So limiting how many people are coming in and out of the building, really the kids and the teachers and any specific volunteers that might be doing, helping out the school. Let's say, let's say we had a volunteer in the cafeteria that was helping Sylvie box lunches up. That person would be allowed to come in. All temperatures will be taken of any adults that would be entering into the building. So their temperatures would be taken prior to and they need to do a quick checklist of if they've had any symptoms. And I know you guys are posting questions, so I will take some time to get to those, so just bear with me. As far as, you know, any sort of gatherings, we want to try to keep those to virtual as much as possible. So, you know, spirit meetings, PTO meetings, things like that. It's preferable if we keep those to a virtual setting to allow to keep people from entering the building. And we don't want to get parents sick either. We don't want you guys to get sick because that causes a problem. Then your kid has to stay home and there's a lot of ripple effects to that. So virtual events, things like that, obviously tonight we don't have this. I would have loved to have had this in person in the gym. Meeting virtually is preferable. If we do have some sort of event taking place, there will have to be, you know, it'll have to have specific Larimer County guidelines. So spacing taking place, you know, not, if it's inside, mask wearing. Just making sure that we're following that hand sanitizer on hand. Lots of signage, things like that. We'll be having lots of visual markers and signs throughout the building. So there's going to be signage on the floor, reminding kids of spacing, which way they should be walking in the hallway. I know that doesn't seem like a big deal, but that will cut down on chances of, you know, transmission of students, especially if they're in different classes. We'll be having signage outside, on doors outside, just so that if visitors are coming up to the door, they kind of know what our expectations are. And then also signs to remind kids within the bathrooms of good hygiene and good practices. You know, did they apply hand sanitizer when they entered back into the classroom? Did you wash your hands? Those types of things. So just that constant reminder. So parents, your kids are going to have the cleanest hands that they've ever had, which is awesome. I think that also cuts down on some of the other, you know, just stuff that kind of goes around the school. So that's a good thing as well, along with cleaning the spaces. Let's see. Okay, so I'm just going to go through a couple notes, a couple of questions. I'll get to the mass question in a minute. Friday masses, that's something that's going to be a little bit tricky as we're working through how many people can attend each mass. It is limited. And so for masses, we're allowed to have, under the age of 10, we can have about 88 students. And over the age of 10, we can have about 78 students. Now I will follow up with the parish side. I would say for this first Friday, we would ask that parents don't attend that as we're trying to still figure out the spacing piece of that. Parents, we want you to participate as much as possible, but there will be some restrictions on what that's like. And I hate to be selfish, but I want to put as many kids as we can into the mass. And then if there is room for others to join, then that would be something that we have to work out. And it might be something that we require a sign up for, just so we know who's coming and that parents aren't just dropping in and it causes a spacing or numbers issue there. As far as, we'll get to classrooms. Okay, I'm going to keep moving along and I'll keep, hopefully I'll answer these questions as we're going along. Social distancing, so Larimer County's protocols, they put out a four-page document for schools to follow. And as long as we're following those, we're in good shape and we're allowed to stay open. So what they are stating is spacing for students is four to six feet. So four feet minimum of spacing. And so what we're doing is we have between four to four and a half foot of spacing at our desks. We have ordered, they're not plexiglass, but they're vinyl desk shields that are really easy. They fold up and they can be, you know, put away. They can be wiped down really easily and placed back on the desks. So that'll provide an extra, you know, an extra level there in front of the students. So we will be keeping the spacing. Again, with preschoolers, we can't guarantee that a preschooler is not going to run up to another preschooler. And, you know, that's just, that's how they are. Middle schoolers, it's a lot easier to tell them, hey, guys, make sure that you guys are spacing out. And we would like to think that they'll be able to do that. So we'll just, it's again, these first, this first week, it's, we're going to be, it's all about policies, procedures, going through all that, making sure the kids feel safe. We don't need to, you know, it's not something that we're going to be like scolding a kid if they, you know, bump against another kid. That's not what it is. And the way to learn is to just give them that positive reinforcement. Hand washing and sanitizers. So obviously hand washing is preferable, but we would be stuck at sinks all day if we were hand washing all the time. So what is the next preferred sort of recommended way? It would be to have hand sanitizer. So upon arriving to the classroom in the morning, everyone should be applying hand sanitizer. I saw something on the news where a nurse had stated, and those of you that are nurses can chime in on this to me and let me know if I'm not correct. But they did recommend when you are applying the hand sanitizer to rub your hands briskly really fast to create that friction and making sure that you're actually getting those fingertips and then the palms and in between the fingers. So we'll be working on the kids with just that kind of basic, you know, hand washing. How long should that be? 20 seconds? And, you know, some people say the ABCs. And so we'll have those things posted in the bathroom so that it reminds the kids how long they should be doing that and what that looks like for washing their hands. Before and after eating. So before they eat lunch, they will all be washing their hands in a sink with soap and water and making sure that that's done. And then after they eat as well, they need to at least apply hand sanitizer. If they are, if they are outside, we'll be making sure that we have some hand sanitizer outside so that when they're done, they can apply that hand sanitizer outside and then proceed to recess. Obviously, hand washing after we use the restroom, I don't even know why this is on here. That's something that should be done, but it's a good reminder. They should be washing their hands after they use the restroom. We'll get into restroom use here in a minute. After encountering body fluids. Now let's say a kid, you know, has their mask down to blow their nose or they're going to sneeze and they have a Kleenex and they've covered their face. After they do that, they should be applying plenty of hand sanitizer to their hands. You know, obviously replace the mask, but putting hand sanitizer on their hands so that they're not touching other things. And then after playing outdoors, they should be washing their hands or applying hand sanitizer. Now, one question came up today from teachers. And it was like, well, you know, if they're applying a lot of hand sanitizer and things like that, you know, some of these kids' hands are going to just be fried. And so, you know, if they do need like hand lotion, I mean, please don't go to the store and buy this gigantic tub of it. But we'd ask that it would be unscented as students and teachers have certain scent reactions. So we'd ask that it be unscented and that it wouldn't be a large thing. And also, you know, if it starts to become a distraction, that might be something that the teachers reach out to you and say, hey, we're having a real issue with having, you know, Johnny's applying a big gob of that. So that's something that, you know, if kids' hands start getting dry and cracked, that you would be able to send some lotion with them, but it has to be unscented. Okay, moving on. See, now we have some questions. We'll get to some of these. There's a couple of questions about middle school changing classes. We'll get to that. Desk shields. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Specials, I'll talk about that. And we'll talk about quarantine. Okay, so masks. Okay, based on the state and local guidelines, masks are required for all students. Now, I know the governor came out and said 10 and over should wear masks. And then basically what has happened is Larimer County has come in and said, yeah, that's true. However, for schools to be open, we would prefer that it's three and older wear masks. Now, there's a little bit of difference there. Again, I have to follow state guidelines, but I also have to follow Larimer County's guidelines because they're the ones that can come in and just close the school down if we're not following protocols. And so preschool, you know, Shelley's going to do the best with the students in there. You know, Mary with kindergarten, she's going to do the best she can with those kids to try and encourage, you know, to keep those masks on. I cannot 100% guarantee that a kid's not going to be pulling his mask down or doing some crazy thing with the mask. And it's not going to be something that a teacher can just stop teaching the whole day and just keep telling kids to do that. So we're going to do our best to have those kids keep the mask on. Part of the reason for us to get those desk shields was to help with that. And obviously I don't want a kid like passing out if they're getting lightheaded. It's like tough, you're just stuck. Like we're going to work through that with that student. With that being said, what's recommended is that teachers take mask breaks. And that would mean, you know, take the kids outside. So the teachers will be taking the kids outside, not just for a five-minute mask break, but for chances when they can teach outside. So it could involve, maybe the kids are taking their books outside to read. Maybe they're reading a novel and the teacher's taking them outside and they're all reading outside. They're able to space out in that point in time. They do not have to wear masks outside. That is not required per Larimer County Health Department's orders. They do not have to have a mask when they're outside. Now, that doesn't mean we want the kids to be all over each other, but we do want them to still maintain some spacing. And I'll get into the recesses. So during lunch or snack time, obviously they can't eat with a mask on, so they would pull their mask down to eat that snack. But they aren't to get up and run around the classroom or anything like that, so they need to be sitting. While at the desk, if, you know, it might be hard for a teacher to hear them when they have their mask on, so they might need to pull the mask down to ask a question and then, you know, put the mask back up. When a teacher's in front of the classroom, the teachers are allowed to not have their mask on. They do have face shields and they are keeping a six-foot distance from the students. And so that way the kids can hear the teachers while, and also, you know, see their expression and be able to read their lips. Some students, you know, are able to learn and follow along by reading lips. And so we want to make sure that learning is hopefully still able to happen with limited restrictions, but also following protocols. Please make sure, parents, that you provide two clean masks for your students with their name labeled on them. Now, if it's a black mask, use a white Sharpie marker and put their, you know, put their name somewhere on the masks so that we can identify and we're not, you know, losing all these masks and we don't know who they go to. Reason for two masks is because it is a likelihood that a kid could, you know, drop it while they're in the bathroom on the ground or, you know, for whatever reason. Let's say they got a bloody nose and all of a sudden it's in their mask. We want to be able to change that. We do also have some disposable masks here for emergency situations. If, let's say that they ended up getting two masks and they were, you know, messed up for whatever reason, we could provide them that. But please, 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 provide them masks that they're going to be comfortable with each day. And then as soon as they come home, I would just throw, I would throw the masks immediately in the wash or there's different ways that you can sanitize masks depending on what the material, excuse me, is made out of. Masks need to be free of any political or potentially offensive slogans or symbols. So please, I mean, despite your political views, like just send them with a relatively normal mask. I don't care if there's little, you know, teddy bears or flowers or things like that on there. And I didn't want to require everyone to get, you know, Lands' End St. Joseph logoed, you know, masks. So as long as they're just not insanely crazy and super distracting, I don't, it doesn't really bother me what they look like. Let's see. Please let the office know and let your classroom teacher know if a child has any special communication needs. And also if there is an issue with wearing a mask, that's an actual medical issue that you have, you know, that you've met with your doctor on and things like that. That would be something that we'd need to provide. And then that also can help us work through, you know, how are we able to, what's the best situation for that student in that class and also the other students? So please contact the office and just provide that documentation for us. I'd really appreciate it. Fresh air. So, you know, people are in, kids are in the classroom, teachers in the classroom. So our elementary side was built in 1926 and our middle school side was built in 1997, I believe. So the key for our school, because we don't have the most, you know, state-of-the-art HEPA filter filtration system throughout the school, is to keep as many windows open as possible and keep the classroom doors open to allow that fresh air to actually circulate through there. That is what's been recommended by Centura Health and the Archdiocese has advised us on, that's the best way if you're limited by what your building is, to do that. Now, we will be working on what does that mean for the wintertime. So we're going to be having, you know, HVAC person come and check out the school, meet with us and Father and myself to let us know what's the best way during the wintertime. Because if we keep all the windows open, then kids are going to be really chilly and we can't be five below and try and teach class. So we're going to come up with a solution for the wintertime and we'll let you know as soon as we have those things in place. Again, classes will go outside when they possibly can to increase chances that they're outside and they're actually breathing as far as that goes. Yeah, we'll be looking at possibly, you know, maybe there are, we can get a donor, donors that would be willing to, you know, get some HEPA filters for the classroom, something like that. But for now, while the weather's nice, being able to have, I mean, having four windows open in a classroom's pretty good and then having the doors open, it'll just create that circulation. It'll create that circulation within the classroom. Yeah, a good question on here, what do we do with a child who has asthma? So going back to a couple of things that I need from the parents. Please, if your kids have any sort of allergies, seasonal allergies or any sort of allergies, please make sure Denise has that updated information in the office. And then also let the classroom teacher know because if a kid has allergies, maybe they do have a cough from the allergies. I know sometimes when allergies kick up, I start coughing and I have to tell everyone, I don't have COVID. It's, I didn't take Zyrtec today. So please let us know because that'll also help us if a kid's coming to school and has a cough from allergies. And you as a parent, you should know the difference because you know your kid really well on, okay, here's allergies and all of a sudden the kid's showing, you know, what are these other symptoms? We'll go through that. All teachers and students are going to be restricted from entering other classrooms or workspaces whenever possible. Okay, so we don't want, you know, third grade going into first grade. Now, where that becomes, where we makes it tough is with our middle school. So students will be, students will be switching classes with their teacher, but sanitizing is going to be taking place in between those, spacing. And so that's the. And so that's that's the unfortunately, there there really isn't a way for us to just have sixth grade just with misjinks the whole entire day. If it if we start seeing that it becomes a problem, that might be something that maybe we have to, you know, reevaluate with maybe utilizing technology while the while the students are at school. But for now, we're going to be doing that and the and the middle school teachers will be keeping, you know, that six foot spacing upfront. And then obviously having the students wear masks and then sanitizing between classes will be taking place as well. Restroom use with restrooms, we're blocking off certain stalls so that we don't have a bunch of kids all in there at the same time. Teachers will be letting one boy and one girl go to the classroom out of time. Obviously, if it's like an emergency and a kid's getting ready to have an accident, we want to get them to the bathroom as soon as possible. And so making sure that they're utilizing a space that's actually available. And then trying to keep classes to their sort of designated bathrooms as much as possible will also help. So we don't have every class going through the same bathroom throughout the day. So again, kind of keeping that spacing, but also, you know, if a kid's going to have an accident, we want to make sure that they actually can utilize a restroom. And then sanitizing the restrooms at least four times throughout the day. Making sure that, you know, those those places, since there's more than one class that's going to be going there, we want to make sure that those are, you know, being being cleaned and sanitized. Students will thoroughly wash their hands in the bathroom before returning to any class. Prior to entering any of the classes, so if middle school's switching, sixth graders, let's say they're going from social studies to science. They will, as upon entering, they have to apply that hand sanitizer when they come into that to that space. Okay, we'll keep going through here. Talk about what you stay at home. Deep cleaning and disinfecting, we'll be doing that throughout the day as well as in the evening with our janitorial crew. Wellness checks, you guys have a a daily home screening for students on this plan. And it looks basically like like this document. Okay, so basically, what what you want to do with with that? Let me share the screen here if I can. I'll go to that. It's the daily home screen for students. So here's the main thing that you as parents have to check prior to sending your kid to school. And this is very important. The reason I need you, I need your guys' help on this is to ensure that we're keeping sick kids home. And I know that sometimes it's like, well, that, you know, they barely have a cold or whatever. Now, keep in mind, it's two or more symptoms. So if the kid has, let's say, a runny nose and it's nothing else, there's no temperature, there's no cough, there's no chills, there's no diarrhea, vomiting, abdominal abdominal pain, no headache, no loss of taste or smell. Those types of things, then, you know, they're probably okay to come to school. However, if you're at all or like, you know, I feel like my kid might be coming down with something, here's the thing. I would recommend keeping them home that day because there there's kind of two reasons behind that. One, you're keeping them home that day. And for those of you that are working parents, it's a lot easier to tell your boss, I can't come in today. I have to stay home with my kid. They're sick for one day versus if you send the kid to school and now they have, let's say, three symptoms, let's say they have a sore throat, a fever of they get they come down to the office and they have a fever of a hundred and one and they're coughing. At that point in time, because they're showing symptoms, we could potentially have to close down. Let's say it's a first grade class, the first grade class for fourteen day quarantine period. Now, you have to go to your boss and tell them, I gotta be home with my kid for two weeks because they quarantined the class. Now, that doesn't mean that learning stops. That just means that we have to quarantine that first grade class for two weeks. That is what the health department is requiring. That's what, you know, CDC and and all the other health, basically, health professionals are saying is that in order to limit the spread of COVID. So it's where, yeah, unfortunately, well, then your kid, you know, they only they only have a, you know, a cold or whatever. So that's why this is very important. So in the morning, when you wake up in the morning, please check your kid's temperature at home. Just really quickly, just do a quick temperature check. If you don't have a thermometer, go to the, you know, go to the store and just pick up one. Can be a under the tongue one, it could be a temporal, you know, where they go over. We will actually be using utilizing these no touch thermometers and they are pretty accurate for the most part. So we'll be we'll be utilizing these in the morning. But please take their temperature. If it's at like a hundred degrees, that's, you know, it's not a hundred point four. But if it's at a hundred degrees, that might be a good indicator of, hey, you know what, I'm gonna keep them home today. Teachers will be working with you guys and your students on any sort of makeup work. Now, if we have, you know, if we have a bunch of students out, we have ordered webcams so that our teachers can utilize those. But unfortunately, they're on back orders, so it might be October timeframe when we have those. So teachers might find other ways that they're able to record their classes and be able to do that or bring those kids back up to speed. But working with those those parents, if they're keeping their kids home. So again, if your kids at all coming down with something, keep them home. That's one day or two days, you know, if they have symptoms, you need to keep them home. They gotta be twenty-four hour symptom free. Okay, so you might have to keep them home for two days, but that's better than fourteen days. And you're also helping out all the other parents within that classroom and you're helping other students and staff members in the school. So you go through this checklist, fever, no, sore throat, yes, cough, no, chills, no, diarrhea, no. Headache, no, smell, no. Okay, so they only have maybe a little bit of a sore throat. Again, if they don't have these other symptoms, you technically do not need to keep them home. But we would recommend it if you feel like they're coming down with something. So again, that's having that conversation. Please do not give your children children's Tylenol on right before you leave for school or in the parking lot or in the, you know, in the car line. Because you have to send, because again, you're potentially putting the whole entire class into a into a situation where they could have to go into a fourteen day quarantine period. So it's better just keep them home that day. And I, you know, I know scrambling last minute for work, I mean, there's times where I keep my kids home and I don't come into school. Because I would rather keep my kid home that day than, you know, get other teachers and kids sick. So please, 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 that's the biggest thing that we need from all of you is to just, if your kids are at all a little bit sick, just keep them home. So what we'll be doing is we will be having the students temp checked when they arrive upon arrival. And so what we'll have is we'll have three teachers out on Meldrum. And first through eighth grade will be getting dropped off at Meldrum Street. And kindergarten and pre K and preschool are dropped off on Howe Street. And so what you'll be doing is three cars at a time. So we'd ask, we'll have a cone out and and I'll have all the directions for you guys so that you can print them off and review them on Friday. But essentially, the first three cars that are in line, teachers will approach. We'll ask the students to just step out of their vehicle, take parents, don't don't leave after the kids step out of vehicle. We'll take the temperature. If the kids are good, then they'll proceed through the gate, making sure they're spacing, proceed through the gate. And then they will go to their designated spot. Then, once those, once they're good to go, then the parents can leave, once the kids are good to go. Now, if if a parent pulls up and we take the temperature and the temperature is one hundred point four or higher, we will be sending the student home with you. And we'll do it, we'll do a second test. You know, if it comes up one hundred point five, we'll ask you to wait there for a minute. We'll go to, you know, go do two or three other cars, we'll come back, we'll test them again. And if it's a hundred, one hundred point four or higher, they immediately need to go home. So it's probably best if you just do a temp check in the morning before they come because that saves you time. And it and it's just gonna be easier and you're not wasting a trip driving all the way over to the school. So that's how we'll handle as far as dropping it off. Shelley and Mary will be sending out specific directions for pre K and preschool families and kindergarten families because they're gonna be doing it a little bit more in it in a little bit different fashion because of the age group that they're at. Now, for pickup times, we will ask that we kind of go back to the old way that we used to do it, which is preschool through third grade will be on Howe Street. And fourth through eighth grade will be picked up on Meldrum. So to avoid mixing classes as much as possible, parents, if you have a first grader and a seventh grader, you would pick up your first grader first and then you'll loop back around. I know it's a little bit more inconvenient, but it helps us to try and keep the spacing and keep the kids in cohorts as much as possible. So we'll be asking you to do that. Again, we'll send out the very specific directions on that on Friday to make sure that everyone understands new families will help you, will guide you with that. So please do not panic and we'll make sure your kids are not, you know, not freaked out. We'll walk them through it as well. I'll go through a little bit more of the COVID in a little bit. Remote learning, okay, so we do have students signed up for Saint Isidore, which is the online through the Archdiocese and they have specific hired teachers down at the Office of Catholic Schools that will be teaching that. Those of you that are on Saint Isidore, you are allowed to return to in-person learning at the school at the end of a quarter. So at the end of first quarter, let's say October, you're ready to send your kids back, their seat has been saved. For those of you that are doing something else, we would ask you to give us a heads up. And then if there is space within that classroom, then then that would be a conversation that we would have with you regarding that. But I can't guarantee that there would be a spot if you do decide to want to come back in January. So that's kind of the the unfortunate part, but we're trying to still keep open with limited class sizes and, you know, keep moving forward on that. Let's see, oh, sorry, I kind of skipped around. I apologize. I keep going back and forth. Going back to the to the checklist in the morning, okay? If a student has been in close contact within six feet of an infected person for at least fifteen days, or excuse me, with at least fifteen minutes with a person confirmed for COVID nineteen, you're probably gonna be contacted either by that, maybe that particular person, if it's like your family member or a neighbor or a friend or the health department will be contacting you. And then at that point in time, you're you would have to quarantine. And then you'll have to let the school know and then we have to let the health department know. And then they're gonna give us guidance depending on going through if we need to quarantine a whole entire class or not. It all depend on the whole contact tracing and when people came into contact. Students travel to an area that is reporting large numbers of COVID nineteen cases that students need to go into self quarantine period for fourteen days. That's probably not gonna happen really because it's not like people are flying out of state or, you know, doing other things. So if you do happen to go somewhere out of state and, you know, it's it's a high likelihood, let's say it's New York City or Los Angeles, we would ask that you would self quarantine for fourteen days prior to coming back. Because the whole reason with the fourteen days is it allows a time for if symptoms are to manifest that they would happen within that fourteen day period. Now, some people don't show symptoms. And so, again, parents, I can't guarantee that a student won't come to school that has COVID. They might not have any of these symptoms. That's just not anything we can guarantee. And we also can't require even Colorado Department of Health and Laramo County Health, it doesn't require us to have every student tested prior to entering in the building. That's just not not happening. Now, let's say you do want your student or yourself to go get tested. Usually, if you call your doctor's office ahead of time or call the the places that they do the testing, the hospitals or the other locations. Usually, if you call ahead of time and you schedule it, that's usually free or it's paid for by your by your health insurance. And so a lot of times, that's not something where you have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars out of your pocket or anything like that. And we can, we can get into more of, you know, if you're having, you're saying, I want to go get tested and you need some guidance, we can help provide where the locations are at. You can go through all of this of when to return to school. I'm not gonna go through that since it's already printed out. Let me get back to the questions. We are, as far as escorting their kids to their classroom on the first day. We're working on that with the teachers. Again, we're trying to limit, we don't want a bunch of parents coming into the building all at the same time. If there is a student that maybe has, maybe there's some certain situations where that might be something that we need to do. But we would ask that you drop your kids off and we're gonna be helping them out. And I know there's gonna be some kids crying or especially, you know, third, third and under will be really working with the kids, you know, making sure that they feel comfortable and especially our new students that this is the first time coming here. But the teachers are gonna be sending out very specific on Friday, they'll make sure they send you guys all an email and kind of walk you through kind of how each grade is going to be handling different things. But we would ask that that is limited unless a student has those needs where where a parent would need to. And we may have to set up a, maybe it's something where it's not the time where every single kid's coming in. Maybe it's, you know, you're having to come a little bit earlier. So we will make sure we reach out. If you do have that concern, please, please email your your homeroom teacher just so they know and they'll have that conversation with me. But really limiting how many parents, I know the first day is like the most chaotic, but limiting how many parents are in the building, that's very super important. So we had asked that, you know, please do not do that unless there is some circumstance. Then you can reach out to us and let us know what that circumstance is and we can let you know if that's something and we'll work, we'll work out a situation with that. Let's see. I'm gonna give very, I'm gonna give a clear chart for for everyone along with how sick is sick. And, you know, what does that mean if if one kid is sick? You know, obviously, those of you that have multiple kids, if one kid, if one kid tests positive for COVID, the whole family needs to like quarantine. Please do not send the other kids to to school if they do that. And then also, there could be a possibility where, you know, one class goes into quarantine and then maybe it's, it could be other students, it could be other classes, because again, there's that ripple effect. So we'll be sending guidance. There's, there's basically two options. We can either be open and have the possibility of having these fourteen day quarantine periods or we can just do one hundred percent online. That's kind of our, really our two options as far as what we're able to do. It is a little more difficult to do a hybrid model, having, you know, five kids come this day and ten kids come that day. That can be a little bit challenging, but I would rather us go into a fourteen day quarantine period than a three month quarantine period. And so we're going to work through, as far as 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 utilizing Zoom calls, we're looking into other options like Google Meets and things like that. As far as, I think, one question came through, as far as the webcasting or the virtual meetings. We're looking into all those different options as far as that goes. And then we'll be sending out a detailed plan of what does distance learning look like? If a class does have to go into distance learning, it won't just stop, there will be classes taking place. Yeah, so what time do you drop off? Seven thirty, parents can be here ready to drop off. Please do not have the students get out of the cars until the teachers have arrived outside. And we'll, again, we'll be doing it in a very organized but hopefully efficient way. So seven thirty to seven forty-five, so obviously, I would get here, you know, the earlier the better. And then anybody that ends up, let's say they're coming at seven forty-seven, we would ask that, you know, obviously, you're still trying to make it over to Meldrum for the drop off on first through eighth. Anybody that ends up arriving tardy, so let's say that teach all staff have come inside. Any staff that's, or excuse me, families that are arriving tardy, you'll need a need to pull around to the the front parking lot, the church school parking lot. And you will need to actually escort your kid to to the front. And we'll have some markings so that people are spaced out. But we need you to be there so that we can take a temperature check and that way, if they're sick, you're you're not just dropping them off and leaving and you get three blocks away and we call you and you have to come back. So it's best if you, if you're not, if you just please plan on being here at seven thirty. Um, and and so we're really trying to cut down on the on the tardies. Again, I know, you know, nobody's perfect and there will be times and if there's a train, then we'll adjust, you know, with making sure that myself and maybe Kyle Esther and maybe one other person that's available to be outside to to work with families that might be arriving late. Um, but please, please, please try and be on time as much as possible. Um, and uh, no, a kid, if you're in line, so if you're in line, um, that's a great question. Um, if you're in line and we're still checking temperatures and it's seven forty-seven, your kid is not considered tardy. What would be considered tardy is once, you know, once everyone's kind of gone in and let's say you're 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 running late and you arrive at eight oh five. When you're coming to the front office area um or coming there and we have somebody coming out, that would be considered a tardy. But no, I mean, especially these first couple weeks as we're getting through this and we may have to adjust this. But as we're getting through this, we are not going to be marking kids tardy. If a parent stick, you know, fifteenth person in line and we're, you know, the thermometers are acting up and stuff, please, please just have patience with us and please, you know, ma- ensure your kids that they're going to be okay. Mr. Blanco is not going to make them do pushups for being tardy. Um, I'm not going to do that. Um. Uh. Get into a little bit more of that. Yeah, so um, as far as like if a kid is sick, um, right now, we we have limited capabilities because we don't have um webcams in every single classroom for being able to um broadcast those classes while kids are out. We're going to try and get as creative as possible. Obviously, if there's like three or five kids out that are self-quarantined and the class is still able to meet, then yeah, we do need to try and get creative with that so that um, especially for fourteen days. So we're going to do our best to work with you parents and and really work with the kids. Um, with that being said, you know, obviously the teachers aren't going to adjust their schedule because kids are at home quarantined if they're teaching class at school. It would be this same kind of setup and that would be something where maybe it's, hey, you know, we really think you should sit in on this math lesson. I'm going to have the, you know, camera facing towards the board while I'm explaining it. That way the kids at home can get that because fourteen, you know, ten days, I should say, at home. Um, that can be quite a bit of of learning that they're missing and that could be a quite a bit of work for um parents to have to, or kids to have to make up. Um, yeah, recording classes, um, and that's a great, great thing as well. And that's something that I, you know, will be advised to teachers as well. Just because then, um, what could happen is let's say your kid is gone and and, you know, let's say Ms. O'Neil has a really great um math lesson that she's doing and she's like, I don't really, it's going to be tough. So maybe she's going to record herself teaching that. And then the next day, when your student, you know, let's say that you kept him home and you're like, well, they had a ninety-nine temperature and the next day they don't have a temperature, you know, at all and there's no symptoms or anything and they only had that one symptom and you're sending them back. What we could have them do is maybe it's during, you know, whatever class it is. Um, it may not be math, but maybe it's another class they can put on their earphones and they can watch the lesson at that point in time or we can send it to you. They can watch it or they can make it up and be able to watch that. So we'll get, we're going to work with the parents. We're, we don't want the kids falling behind, but we also will work with you guys. And we want you to keep the k- sick kids home. Um, because teachers don't want to have to go into a fourteen day quarantine period, distance learning model. Um, they don't want to do that. They want to teach here, but we understand that we're going to have to be working with families. So please be patient with us and we will um be working with you guys um on that. Um. Uh, yeah, I'm going to do a follow-up response email to all of this. Um, definitely. Thank you. That's a good reminder. Thank you, Anita. Um. So I will, so what I'll do is I'll just go through all of these with a follow-up email um to make sure that I'm answering these uh questions. Um. Keeping classes together, again, keeping classes together as much as possible. Where classes will go outside of our classroom this year um is for art. So for art, they will actually go down to Ms. Kinney's class. She will be sanitizing in between classes and we have sent out a list for some additional supplies um in order for us to be able to have that. And so that way your student is using the majority of their supplies. Now, if the kids have to use, let's say, big paintbrushes, Ms. Kinney would set those aside and would not give those to any other um students to utilize until she has a good chance to completely sanitize those. Um, before heading to school, make sure that, um, oh, sorry, also uh PE. So students will be going to PE as well. Um, and it'll be outside as much as possible. Once weather gets sort of turns for the worse, then they'll be inside but spaced out in the gym, keeping classes together again. Um, we are not allowed to have any sort of singing. That is actually per Laramie County's um guidelines. And then with band, um, it's, it's um looking like it's going to be very challenging for band. They're requiring a twenty-five foot spacing gap between each person if there's band. Now, um, that, that can be super challenging. Um, and so we're, we're looking into that. We may, we may be offering band possibly after school on a, on a limited type of basis. I'm working with Andrew on that, so stay tuned. Um, it might be something where it's, it's an after-schools type of thing, but for right now, that's not looking pretty promising for us being able to have band or or music. Um, and it's just because any sort of trumpets or um wi- wind or wood instruments um can't be played. So we're looking at some other, um, some other options. So we'll be filling you guys in on that. Um, make sure before heading to school, you do the pre-screening. Obviously, please report all absences to Denise or or Karen or Deirdre uh with the office number and let us know that your kid is sick. If um, if they do have, obviously, if they have, have um, you know, COVID, we, we will follow HIPAA regulations. So parents, if a student or a teacher gets COVID, we are not allowed to say, Mr. Blanco has COVID, everyone. Um, we would be contacting everyone, letting them know, hey, the first grade, there was, you know, someone in first grade that that um your student came into contact with COVID and it may be Laramie County um contacting you. So we'll work with them and we'll be making sure that we're communicating with you if those situations arise as soon as possible. And, you know, we'll let you know what course of action to take. And again, there won't be this one week transition of a teacher now is like, well, bear with me for a week and we'll ke- check back in a week later. It'll be the very next day. Let's say it's a Tuesday, you have to go into quarantine. The very next day on Wednesday, teachers are hopping right into um into learning. So it's important for you to make sure that you have a internet connection if at all possible. Um, because there will be some face-to-face going on with that and it also depend on the grades. Obviously, we're not going to keep kindergartners on a Zoom call for seven hours. Um, but then the older kids, the middle school kids can run a more normal um class schedule uh for the majority of the day. So we'll be sending out details on that, but the expectation is that learning still takes place. Your students would still be graded for the work that they're doing for those two weeks. Um, so so that's very important. Uh, morning drop-off, went through that. I'll be sending out more detailed information along with pictures so that everyone understands where they need to be and we'll be working with you, especially that first day and the first couple weeks till everyone gets in a good rhythm. And we may have to change things up and we'll also be sending out an inclement weather plan as well um here in the next uh week or two so that you know when it starts to snow, what's the expectation. Um, again, limiting how many kids are in hallways. I'm going to keep uh zipping through this since we've been going. Um, if you need to cut out, again, this will be recorded and posted on our website. Um, locker use. Now, with lockers, uh, we're going to be updating this plan. Um, with lockers, the way that we can have lockers and it, it'll be very limited is to ensure that there's spacing, but then also have groups within the class. So let's say, for example, group A, group B, group C. So group A will be spaced out A, B, C, and not right next to each other if i- if we can all help it, at least have some spacing. So group A, group B, group C. Group A can go to their locker and put the items they might need. So a jacket, you know, whatever that might be. And then those three or four students or five students, they've been spaced out enough and then they can return. And then group B would be able to get up out of their seats and then go and there's spacing. So we're working on that. Um, and then obviously having to sanitize the the exterior. Um, that is a way for us to utilize lockers, but have it be controlled. And again, it's not, we're not having passing period where everyone's at their lockers, hanging out, milling in the hallways, things like that. It's again, keeping spacing, keeping it controlled. Um, and staggering those times that students go. It's parent, parents just know that teachers will be working with the kids and even the younger grades, being able to, you know, get their items and and have their items in a controlled fashion. We will be doing that. Um, so, so please just uh bear with us and work with the teachers and and they'll work with you. Um. Lunchtime. So lunchtime, uh, students can bring a cold lunch or they can order a hot lunch. Um, and then they'll either be eating in their classroom or outside. Uh, desks will be, are going to be sanitized um prior to the, prior to them eating on there as well as afterwards. Um, and then students will be washing their hands. We would ask that you um, that you please, you know, if you're going to have them have a cold lunch, please bring that in the morning. Um, and that that way we're not having parents drop off um meals throughout the day um because we're trying to limit how many, you know, how many things are coming into the building. Now it's in the office now, who do we have, we don't want the student coming down to the office to get that item. You know, we're limited on staff, so I can't just have a bunch of different people delivering that and students won't be in the cafeteria. So um, we would ask that please pack the kids lunch and then if if they didn't bring it that day, then we would ask that they would purchase a a hot lunch. And so each morning, the teacher will be taking roll and then they'll also check on who's has cold lunch and who needs hot lunch. And that way, um, that can take place. All billing for cafeteria fees will go through fax. So please do not submit a bunch of checks. Um, we're trying to make it more streamlined and so your fax account will be billed for um cafeteria meals. With that being said, you still do need to um submit a, a menu to Sylvie. You can screenshot it and email her. You can scan it and email her. Um, but send that to Sylvie and that way she has that and she knows which days your kids are eating what. Um, and if you want to give a, give her a heads up ahead of time, hey, you know, on Friday, you know, the kids are eating lunch and she'll be sending out communication to you guys on the cafeteria. All students need to bring their own water bottle. Um, the water fountains are not allowed to be utilized. We unfortunately do not have those fancy motion water bottle fillers. That might be something that we um, maybe we will be looking for a grant or a donor to uh purchase for the school. So all, all classes have a sink within their classroom except for a few upstairs in the elementary wing. And we'll have a separate water, water jug within that class that will be getting sanitized throughout the day that the students would be. Um, only the students in that class will utilize. So again, it's the, they won't be drinking from it, but they'll be filling their water bottle from it. Um, and that'll limit who is all having contact with that. So that's how we have to get creative with those rooms that don't actually have a sink in their classroom. Um. Students will need to bring their own snack from home. We won't be sharing snacks. Um, and so please make sure you pack your student um snacks and um preferably you're not packing them a five-course meal. Um, but you know, appropriate, healthy snacks. Um, birthdays. We are not going to be um having birthday treats come in for birthdays. Um, this year, uh, we're going to be doing some other things for for birthdays to celebrate it, but we would ask that parents do not bring birthday treats. I know even if they were like individually wrapped and things like that, we're just, it's just better if we just kind of handle things in a very um less touching, less transmitting of of items. And so we won't be having birthday treats, but we'll make sure we do some things. Um, um, possibly a free dress day and some other things to celebrate the kid's birthday because we do want them to feel special. But for this year, we'd ask that no birthday treats um for now. Uh. Okay. Sports. So right now, um, it's been advised that only outdoor sports, and this is even in the high school levels. They don't have, you know, a lot of indoor sports going on. Um, and so I've met with Mr. Esther on that and the league itself has pushed back basketball and girls volleyball um to the spring for now. I cannot guarantee that that will um extend um beyond that. Um. And it may not happen come January. So again, we're going to take guidance from the health department regards to sports and then also what is the league doing? Because you know, what if Laramie County says participate in sports and then Weld County says no? And then you only have half the league that's able to participate. So there's, there's some challenges there, although I think Weld County would probably say yes and Laramie County probably would say no. Um, so that'll be something that we're going to um be working with. So I really do appreciate um, appreciate it and uh, you know, just appreciate your patience and and working with us. We'll be having more information coming out regarding if there are some other opportunities for us to do some, some sort of sports in a very controlled, you know, cohort type of um environment. Cross-country. Uh, Mr. Esther is working on uh getting more information on that and I'll make sure he sends that out to middle school families this week on what does cross-country look like. Um, I'm still waiting on confirmation on who the particular coach is. I don't want to say it out loud in case that person's like, I didn't volunteer. Um, so we'll be, we'll be providing that. Cross-country would be one that we would be allowed to have as long as we have a coach and you know, those, obviously they're outside and the spacing for the most part takes place. Um. Uh, after-school care. So after-school care is available if you absolutely one hundred percent need it and it's going to be handled by After-School Kindness, ASK. Um, so After-School Kindness has been at um Ridgeview, Liberty and Saint John the Evangelist for the last couple of years. Um, and we no longer have base camp. Within after-school care, um, we're asking that they keep the spacing within having sibling groups be together. And then also if kids are in the same grade, they can, can be um clo- like closer together, but also have spacing and then utilizing um the gym um for keeping that spacing and then obviously being outside as much as possible while the weather's nice. And then, you know, when the weather turns inc- inclement, finding a, finding maybe it's possibly the gym or another space um if if spacing needs to, you know, more spacing needs to take place. Um, so there is a link if you click on that for for that information. Now, that's a lot of it. Obviously, I probably did not answer everyone's question. I know I didn't ever answer every single person's question. Um, one quick thing to keep in mind, there is a, there is another document that has been attached and it's from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And it has COVID guidance and it's just two pages. And it goes into detail on what is a confirmed outbreak? What does it mean for classrooms? What does a school-wide outbreak look like? What does a staff outbreak look like? What about suspected? What happens before outbreaks? All that, all this information. And so it's a good, it's a good um item to refer to and we'll be referring to that and I will follow up to make sure um those questions specifically, what happens if a sibling group has COVID or are in different grades? Um, when do you have to shut the whole entire school down? You know, if if there's five or more classes um outbreaks or five percent or more of unrelated students, which is about eleven students. So if they're unrelated, meaning if a family, if two families of three have an out, you know, end up having COVID, that's not enough to just completely shut the whole entire school down unless it's five or more classes. Um, but if there's five percent, which is about eleven students in our school, if eleven students have COVID and they're not related to each other, at that point in time, we would probably have to put the school into a fourteen-day quarantine period. We would have an extra level of cleaning take place and then follow the um Laramie County's guidance to when we're able to return to school. So fourteen day minimum and then be able to return after that per Larimer County Health Department's guidance. But again, learning would then switch to a online distance learning immediately. And so that's something that you guys need to think about as parents. Is that there is a likelihood that a class could go into a fourteen day quarantine period more than once this year. Hopefully, it would only be once or none. But it could happen. And so, you know, if you want to discuss that a little bit more and you're feeling uneasy about it, please, you know, reach out to me and I'll give you a call and talk to you on the phone regarding, you know, how you're feeling about that. Ultimately, you as parents are the deciding factor. And so I don't want you to send your kid to school if you're, if you're just distraught every morning and it's just, it's breaking you apart to pieces. I, I don't want you to be that way and feel that way. And, you know, I want you to also be able to send your kid to school. But also know, we are taking all the precautions to make sure we're following guidelines and also making sure the school is safe and is clean and keeping kids healthy as, and staff. I mean, I gotta, I gotta look out for the teachers too. We all have to look out for the teachers. And we, we don't even want to get you guys sick as well. So we'll be taking every precaution we can following Larimer County's health guidelines, following, you know, archdiocese's protocols that they're putting in place. And, you know, again, please reach out to me if, if you have concerns. And, and, you know, that's a conversation that we can have. I would ask for your patience these first, you know, two weeks at least. You're going to actually ask for your patience this whole entire year. But really, these first two weeks as, as teachers are, you know, even, you know, on a lot more heightened sense of all these moving, you know, pieces and, and ensuring that the kids feel safe, they feel loved. I'm excited to see your kids. I am so super excited. I'm super excited for the school year. But it doesn't mean that I'm not taking, you know, taking all the precautions and, you know, stepping into all the different situations and making sure we deal with, with situations swiftly. And making sure we're, we're informing you of what's going on. I don't want to leave you guys in the dark as well. So teachers are going to be communicating a lot of information with you guys. So please, it'll probably be a lot of information overload, but I would rather have the teachers giving you guys lots of information at the beginning of the year than not giving you enough information. So bear with us. We will do our best to, you know, to be able to do that. Really quickly, one good question that came up was how can kids that are in St. Isidore still interact with their class? You know, we're going to be doing weekly, like a weekly Zoom call or, or Google meets or whatever these different formats are, we'll, we'll let you know. But that way they can still check in with their, with their classroom teacher and also see their, their classmates. And so keep that connection. And I want to still keep connection for those of you that are, you know, still doing, you know, maybe you're doing a, a different program, but you still want to maintain that connection. We want to keep you connected to our school as much as we possibly can because we are, you know, hoping that you will return, you know, either in January or next year. My hope is that we could get all of you back into the school. And so for those of you that are sending your kids, you know, thank you. For those of you that are doing, you know, St. Isidore to start off with, thank you. And for those of you that, you know, you're, you're just, you're not sure right now, I thank you. You know, I want you to be comfortable. I don't want you to be nervous and just say, well, we just need to send our kid. So please, in the end, that's for you to pray about and for you to talk about as a family and make that decision. Again, I'm going to be going through all these questions tonight and typing up some responses both to you specifically and to, to the greater good. Yes, again, be reaching out. I think you guys, I appreciate it. Yeah, any of the mask questions. That's, that's it for now. And I apologize. I tried to cover everything as a general overview. I'm going to be doing more of these sort of town halls virtually. I, I mean, it's actually pretty easy. It's less setup. Hopefully, I still got the going live on, on YouTube. That's not a good thing. Hopefully, we'll have less malfunctions next time and, and make sure we have a, a good system in place. But please, thank you for all your prayers. Keep praying for Father Simone and Father Joe. We'll be sending out more information on what masses are going to look like. I know some of you want to know about those particular things. Yeah, there's Father Simone. Father, thank you for joining in with us.
Yes, I just sent the message to, to everyone. And because I, I'm getting ready to, to leave, I have a morning mass. So thank you for joining us for this town hall meeting. And I pray for every family, every parent, every student. And I'm just looking to the day I can see you dropping the kids here. All right. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Father. Yeah, so anyways, if, if you sent me a question, and I apologize if I didn't, if I didn't respond to your email. I've been getting inundated with emails and text messages and everything. Please, if you still feel like there was a question that you didn't have answered, just go ahead and forward me that question again or send it to me again. Or, or call and leave me a message or text me. And, you know, in this next day, I'm going to be spending time making sure that I do my best to get back to you as soon as possible so that those questions are answered. But I think if I go through these lists of questions and, and send out an email, hopefully that'll answer a lot of those questions. And then more information will be coming out in the next couple of days as well. And yeah, just thank you guys. I really do appreciate all of you, every single one of you. I'm super excited to see every single one of your kids. I'm excited to even see you guys, even if it's just from a distance. And thank you again for all your, your support and prayers. And, and I just pray that God blesses you and your family this year and looks out for all of us. And I do believe he will protect us all and, and, you know, look out for us. So thanks again. Have a wonderful night. And we will see you guys on Monday morning, bright and early. Seven forty-five, school starts. Please, you can arrive at seven thirty. Again, if there's those certain things that you need to let the front office know regarding medical, please let, shoot an email to Denise and let her know that your student has certain medical needs or, or, or things that we need to be aware of. So again, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to seeing all the kids and have a wonderful night. Thank you.